I won't go to room twice in two weeks.
Why can't I share your screen?
Because there's a problem with the link from this and that one. So now on here, I've got us all showing and that isn't. And my agenda is showing on here and it won't show on there. Your guess is as good as mine, to be fair.
Would you like to borrow the hammer?
And then start going.
You know, when he's out.
We had YouTube working, but it's only on webcam, so it's just recording me.
I think we enjoy that.
It's not in this book. Another book. So yes, of some Morgan and very few that you may.
Bye.
Good evening, everyone.
Lovely to meet you.
That's right. Thank you for coming soon for our environment meeting. Apologies for absence.
We've had apologies this evening from councillors Hutchinson, Mossam, Mrs Mossam, Whitterson and Panisaw.
But thank you very much. I shall remember to members' interest to declare, to receive any declaration of interest from members or business to be transacted. Do we have any declarations? None, I will call that as none, thank you very much. Minutes of the environment meeting that was held on the 11th of September. Seems a long time ago, but then it's a couple of months. So there is one small correction, which I didn't pick up, but then it was pages 1897, should be 1789. If we want to correct that, at least just.
It's going back.
Yes, minor amendment, it should be 1789 to 1791. Do we have?
About a second or four minutes.
Nikki, thank you very much. Then.
Climate change.
In that.
Sorry. Oh, yes, the vote, those are the minutes as presented, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Climate change A to receive an update from the climate change working group. Will that be you and Chris?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. Yes, the main thing, I think it's a separate item, maybe the Go Green event, I don't know. I'll come to that. We come to that. So basically, the main thing is we're looking at now. We've done the activities for next year. And basically we will have, we're having another meeting in early December. But it'd be really interesting if there was anything from this committee that would like us to take away and, and look into. So things that we've got potentially, as I say, it's not a complete list because, you know, we can take on other things as well. Take it. And the events can coincide with Big Green Week next year. Run that together with the, similar to our Go Green event. Our view was that we would probably like to do something different next year. Possibly an evening event with, based on climate change issues. And so I think we'll flesh that out a bit more if we've got the general approval could do something like that. The other things were basically is from what we had last year, we put forward things from the from the Bracknell climate change. The, yeah, Bracknell Forest Climate Change, Community Climate Change Action, isn't it? Yes. So we've got, there was the lakes and waterways things. One of the issues we were looking at was possibly the Snap Rails Pond with the, the outlet we are there, which would possibly improve the environment of it and also could attenuate floodings, especially here in the Bouncy Pond, because that feeds into that. So that was a, an idea, this is just an answer to this, by the way. There was green verges. Rewilding them and tree planting. Bit on the lines of the bolt planting that we did earlier. Thermal imaging, we've already implemented that and I'd like to say something a bit more about that in a moment. The Cycling and Pedestrian Network for Sandhurst, Michael and I did the survey. I've got a draft report, but I haven't completed it yet, there's a couple more bits I want to have a look at. If the, this committee would like to see the finished report, I'm more than happy to circulate that. Yeah, we came back to the EV charging for residents off-road. We there was a suggestion to investigate the feasibility of getting a commercial supplier to install rapid charge, perhaps at five acre. Thought there'd be no budget needed for that. I think we did look at it last year, that revisit that. Another one, perhaps we could revisit it, this was the solar farm over Car Park. Clearly not something that's going to happen overnight, that one, or really soon, but it seems something that would be worthwhile investigating, what the possibilities were there, what? I mean, it would be an income source from the electricity. There's obviously a cost to put it in there. The education and public engagement, that was really like the first one we were talking about, so the events. An evening event for next year. Yeah, the other two were really non-starter, heat pumps for the council premises, which we ruled out last year. Oh, the last one was possibly, if we can, we understand Great Western Railway was actually, had some funding for suitable infrastructure projects, so it might be worth having a look at that again. I don't think there was anything more that we discussed, was there on that one? Yeah, was there? Yeah, okay, I was just going to come back to the thermal imaging. That has now started, I don't think we've had any update from it yet, but on the other hand, I haven't had any really cold weather when it worked. So it's not really surprising that, that we haven't had any uptake for that yet. Okay.
I think with the weather dipping, isn't it, this weekend, it's been a bit low enough to, to be able to use it and get white results.
Get a jumper on stage.
How cold does it need to be?
Well, it should be below about five degrees, I think.
Five degrees.
Pretty low, isn't it?
Colder it is, the more.
You've not put on your heating yet.
Got fire.
With the heating on, yeah.
I am very impressive. This is a few too much, I think.
This comes in automatically when they turn the shade on.
To get, to get the best result for thermal imaging, it needs to be five degrees or below. So it needs to be a cold night.
It's really, I mean, it's funny because it was also time, I remember the same week, a few years ago, and it was like minus one. And we're currently 15 degrees or something crazy.
It's a couple of years ago, we had the concert which we're doing tomorrow, Crowthorn. Three years ago, I think we had to cancel it because it was snowing.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our discussions on that. Shall I go on to the Go Green?
Are there any questions that we need, or do we have recovered it sufficiently? Fine, okay, do then be. Go Green, okay, the Go Green event.
I think it was rather disappointing, we didn't have as many attendees as we'd hoped. This year, I have to give thanks to the office who did everything we asked with the advertising and publicity. We also did some more, you know, put notices around and pretty much saturated social media, I think, for a little while. Yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at something different for next year that's going to have more popularity.
Maybe it could be every other year, something, something else.
Interesting you say that because one of the discussions we've had with other, the.
Crowthorn, is it?
Well, with Crowthorn and the other the other, all the other parish and towns.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on great.
Because for this year, this summer, virtually everyone, well, not everyone, but there were at least four that were run at different times. So they were some, to some extent, competing with each other. So it seems, makes sense to actually combine our efforts with, with those so that, you know, same people would, would only have one event to go to. So as you can see, there's nothing really solid yet, but we would be coming back at the next environment meeting with some proposals, I hope. Possibly with a request for a budget. At the moment, we haven't got anything solid, but our thinking.
But presumably, Chris, we would also continue with our own meetings. I think we. In between the environment meetings, maybe to explore options.
Well, I think so, I mean, if we've got anything to do, yes. If there's nothing for us to do, we're winding up, wouldn't we, but I think there is, there is.
There's, there's a lot of ideas floating around, we need to explore those a bit more as to which direction we're going to channel for the next year, isn't it really, Chris?
I mean, there was one thing that was discussed, and I think it's probably going to come up anyway, wasn't it, the the day centre? Being solar on to that, and how that would be funded, is that, is that coming up?
That's coming up S and P next week.
Strategy and policy, isn't it?
Week after.
Oh, okay, because they, you know, the thought we had was that.
Every week.
Is that.
Well, certainly it has progressed well because we had a meeting this morning, the trustees meeting where Diane made the, well, Diane particularly made the presentation on the costings, which are worth exploring, I have to say.
Question about the heat gun thing. I know you've done rules and how to use it and things like that. Is it worth somebody doing an article for the SRA magazine, remember?
It's going in our magazine.
It's in the centre bits, is it? Excellent coordination. Thanks.
Yeah, and all the stuff's now on the website.
Yeah, yeah, but there's people who aren't online and that's always my concern with it.
Yeah, that's why the magazine does well at that.
And it's the right time you put it in, but yeah, you put it in three months ago, it would have been completely useless.
They'd have bumped.
Yeah.
But we are competing with the library who have also got the Bracknell Forest scheme, so.
Well, that's fine. It's fine, there's 8,000 homes in Sandhurst. Plenty of opportunity.
Is it the same model we talked about?
I don't think, I don't think it's much different.
All right.
Anything else, Chris, or?
Nothing.
Right, in that case then, that was item number four, item number five for us to me, which is flower towers. I have to say that this is a case of one step forwards and two steps back, and Elke's smiling, and I know one. Two months ago, when we had the environment meeting, I felt that we'd made good progress with two particular locations. One of them was a little shopping parade in Little Sandhurst for the flower tower. And the other one was up at Alsmore, in front of the Alsmore Community Centre. I'd ticked all the boxes in terms of highways, in terms of the land registry, and also in terms of the site ownership. Where Little Sandhurst was actually owned by the developer who had built Valley View behind. And with Alsmore, it was the agreement of the manager of the Alsmore Community Centre. I then moved on to Central Sandhurst with particular reference to the library. Because I think that land in front of the library, between the library and what is effectively the bus stop, would have been a very significant focal point on Yorktown Road with the high volume of traffic going up and down. I got the agreement of highways when I had a Zoom meeting with Wayne, yes, sorry. Sorry, Gary Cleaver, sorry, with Gary Cleaver. He was very concerned about the actual location because, of course, coming out of Broadway and turning right, there was a sightline consideration. So what I did is I put a stick on the ground, took a photograph of it and also did a walk three words, which thanks to Chris, I've now become a bit more authoritative. We learn something every day. Credit to you, Chris. I took the photo off, he was quite happy with that. The land registry with Lee Clark didn't see that there were any concerns, because the land was actually owned by Bracknell Forest Council. However, it's also a library land effectively, because it's managed by the library. He in turn, the email that I sent seeking permission, which he gave in principle, he then passed it on to Bracknell Forest Council, to the lady, and I'll give you the the lady is described as being the environmental services lands management department. So he sent it on to a lady called Emily Bradby, who in turn passed it on to Jennifer Copland, who I remember from my days when I was a borough councillor. Her title is to drive a street cleansing and grounds maintenance manager. The bad news is that she won't give permission for the flower tower to be on the land. The reason that she has given, and I'll read it out to you because it has explained maintenance challenges. The power would create an obstacle for our contractors during grass cutting and strimming, potentially leading to inefficiencies and increased risk of accidental damage. If the tower were to be damaged at any time, our contractors could be unfairly implicated. The fact is that a lot of the land that they cut has benches on, has trees on, that they cut round. But for some reason, she's decided that a flower tower in that location would not be suitable.
That's a shame.
It means basically that we can't progress with it without her agreement. What it then invites, looking forward, is that when I'm looking at now two more locations for flower towers in central Sandhurst, two for Collidge Town. Again, they're likely to be on Bracknell Forest land and they're likely to involve grass cutting. So that does invite the question, will I need to declare to Jennifer Copland that it is our intention to position a flower tower in location X or Y, and does she agree to it? So that's the situation, however.
Who does she work for?
Sorry.
Bracknell Forest. Yeah, I know that bit. I've got that bit. No, who's her councillor? Thank you, that's the word.
She's, I know, is a fairly senior position.
It may be senior, but you know, she's, she's not going.
There's always somewhere that to, to work around, I mean, is it, so I, I think listening to, from what she's saying is that if the mower is then going around it, it's not going to be maybe close enough to the flower tower to do, to, to edge, not as smartly, I'm like.
That's what she's.
Yeah, but, but then could they maybe do a larger base than what the flower tower is, so that then that gives the mower that difference?
But they know the size because she makes reference to Crowthorn.
Yeah, well, I think, could you put, yeah, some slabs around it so you're not cutting close to it?
Or even just like the.
Slabs or something.
Or some, some.
The problem is if you do that though, Nick, the grass is going to grow and grow and it will probably look a little bit untidy.
So if you put slabs. You can then get the mower up to the slabs, which would be far enough away from the.
It's crazy.
Where are they, where are they positioned in, in Crowthorn? As far as I was going to say. How, how come Crowthorn's allowed to do it in Sandhurst?
So Crowthorn is different, we do, remember, all those years, I think maybe before Diane, you actually drawing environment. Crowthorn actually has got very large pavements.
They're on pavements.
They are very.
They're not on grass, they're on, on slabs anyway.
See, the difficulty that we've got, actually the difficulty is you look at somewhere like outside Greggs, that would be a nice location for it. But unfortunately, if you've got a mobility scooter, if you've got a double buggy, it does mean that there is a safety aspect of the pavements that we've got, that do not enjoy the width, go up to Crowthorn outside the library and you'll see that basically there's very little grass. It mainly paving slabs.
I know what you mean, fine.
However, however, there, there isn't, in fact, I could say that there is a development. What has happened is that one of the suggestions that was made some time ago, and as you know, there were six of these metal posts in Central Sandhurst. There are five in Collidge Town. I did approach Lee Clark, sorry, I did approach, oh, sorry.
Can we not have a flower tower here?
No.
By the entrance.
Of course, Gary said. What has happened though, is I've had to send several emails to him to find out if he could come back to us with a costing to remove the metal post that they say are, are therefore not suitable for taking the double hanging baskets. I then got on Monday, an email from him indicating that the perpetual cost per coast post is between £500 and £600. We are therefore looking at 11 posts at £6,600, which would at least allow us to move, move forward with a solution that would allow double hanging baskets to be installed on these new metal posts in both Central Sandhurst and Collidge Town. Which will then have these summer flowers and then if it's agreed in the budget, we'll then have the winter flowers. So it is, I think, something that when we come to the budget, is something that we could consider as an alternative to the flower towers. Because frankly, I'm struggling at the moment with the flower towers.
What's the lifetime of the posts?
Well, they've been, the ones that the borough installed all those years ago, were installed, I think, about 23 years ago.
So you're probably taking potential 20-year lifespan.
Yes, yes. So the costing will be £6,600, which will be more than for the six flower towers, but I think would have greater visual impact. And I suggested 6, he's indicated 500 to 600 pounds. I'd rather that we were come 600 pounds because the 500 pounds could be a little bit, it's, it's, it's a ballpark figure.
Is that the labour as well?
Yes. Yeah, well, John, as you've asked the question, let me, let me read it out to you, because it is important.
Is there somewhere on our land that we could put a flower tower for central with that?
Well, the thing is, I think that the thing that we're trying to do is rather than have everything here, spread.
Says here from Gary Cleaver, it was dated the Tuesday, the 21st of November. Hi, Michael, no formal quote, but you're looking in the region of £500 to £600 per post for replacement. This price includes the post and its installation. So I think.
But you've got some option. You've got the authority or the permission to do Alsmore, haven't you?
Yes, and Little Sandhurst.
And Little Sandhurst, okay. So, so why don't we do, go ahead with those as flower towers? And then look a bit more at the options for whether we do a flower tower in a different location or posts.
I think I would, I would say maybe do a mixture, so do the flower towers in two locations, but then look at the posts.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
As well as.
Yeah, yes.
But I don't think when you look at posts, for instance, at Central Sandhurst, we should do every other one. I think it would look a bit thin and she's got a point.
Yeah, we just need to remember this 6,000 is on top of the 5,000 to get the hanging baskets, towers, maintenance, et cetera.
It's going up, isn't it?
I would suggest we think very carefully about just doing two. I think we either do all of them or none, because I think, you know, if you've got one in Alsmore, one in Little Sandhurst, none anywhere else. It's going to appear quite strange, I think we sort of.
I feel it as well. Coming on from a cer, from a certain Mrs T, Travis. Because she keeps nagging me why there aren't flowers.
Well, in fairness, lots of people, that's a lot of money, you know.
Because I must say that when, I don't know if any of you can remember, when we had the flower, the hanging baskets in Sandhurst, they were very impressive.
No one.
They were, yes, John, can I make a suggestion that we email back the officer at Bracknell Forest and just say, we object, can you reconsider? We'll get an appeal. If that fails, then my suggestion would just be to go for the post, replace them and get the flowers up. Because, because we've been talking about this for months now, I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but that's taking up our time, which is also precious.
I think the assistant director for that area is Damian.
Yeah, Damian James.
James.
Sorry?
Damian James will be the assistant director for that area, so it might be worth having a word with him.
I don't like going against officers' decisions because it's, you know, you're, you're.
But sometimes they're going to make a hard decision, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll have a word with him then.
Okay, what, what, do you, do you want me to send on?
Just send me the, send me the details of the rejection stuff and.
That's the email.
Yeah, well, send me the details, email it to me.
Yeah, I will.
And I'll ask, ask Damian to.
Consider.
If you. It doesn't even need to be the slabs thing around it, it could be sort of like a little bit of a, you know, like the rubber.
But I mean, if you look at the patch of ground outside the library.
Yeah.
There's a bench, there's a tree, there's a plaque.
There are obstructions.
Yeah. It might be worth taking a photograph and submitting that with your.
If they manage to go around this tree and they manage to go around this bench, then what's the problem with the flower tower?
But presumably that still doesn't answer the question about Collidge Town because you found nowhere suitable to put a tower in Collidge Town, did you?
Or a second one in central.
Is there not enough room outside the post office? It's always a big bit of pavement, isn't it?
Yeah, but you've got a lot of push chairs and.
Like the table chairs.
It's pretty big though.
It's, it's, thinking about with push chairs and, and bikes and stuff, it's not as big as you maybe now think it might be.
Or just over from the Paddock and Crossing.
Yeah.
Then you've got the, the shop set back quite a lot, isn't it?
Yes, but you've got to think that the ideal place for a flower tower would be right in front of the ATM.
Right, I suppose so, yeah.
And you can imagine.
That's probably access.
It would be the perfect place to put a flower tower, but they can't get to their cash.
Okay, fine.
I'd thought about that one.
Yeah, right outside the farms, outside the JP Surgery, wouldn't it, the other place to put it, but that's quite wide there, but again, you, 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 you'll be obstructing the pavement.
You see, Alsmore, not an issue, nor is Alsmore's fine, because they both got sign off, they meet all the criteria. The difficulty that I've got is I spent a lot of time with regard to the library at Sandhurst, only now to be knocked down.
Yes, well.
So can we put in an order now for Little Sandhurst and Alsmore? Put in an order to get the post replaced, once we've got an official quote, in Collidge Town? Object to the one in Sandhurst, if that doesn't get overturned.
You don't have a budget.
That's, that's what Anne just said to me when I said that, Anne just said that.
You haven't got enough money in the budget.
You need to decide whether you're going to include, I think you need a better view of the budget, but if you're going to work on, you know, £600 post.
Well, that's, that's.
Add it into the budget, so how much? How much does, because you, you had the original budget of 5,000, didn't you?
Yeah.
And how much of that comes off because you're not putting towers in Collidge Town anymore, you're then replacing them with? So some of that 5,000 comes off and then you add 6,000 to it.
No, because the five was originally on hanging baskets in the first place.
Oh, okay.
I presume we can't count it for the 5,000 pounds that we've set aside this year into next year's budget.
No.
We lose it then.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we, we need to create a new budget effectively, and if that was to be needed.
Yes, you need to, it would have to come out in next year's budget.
Yes, I, I can certainly look, as John suggested, you know, the possibility that we have Alsmore and Little Sandhurst as flower towers. And then we have Collidge Town with the five posts as double hanging baskets, but it still doesn't get over the problem of Central Sandhurst.
But that's going to be even more than we first said, isn't it?
Is it more?
Yeah, it's going to be 5,000 to 18.
My, my, my costs are basically for the double hanging baskets, the total cost for the 11 hanging bars, the 11 posts with the double hanging baskets with the winter and the summer flowering comes to £11,550.
What's the total yet?
Yes.
It's ongoing.
Yes, no, no, the next.
Next year, that's because.
Because the post will already be in situ, or we would then be incurring, next year will be the cost of replacing the, replacing the flowers.
Why don't we do half this year and half next year?
I think you have to do all at the same time.
I think the problem is, you finish up as a poor relation and people, I can imagine on social media, they will say, why, what have we done? What have we done to upset Collidge Town or Central Sandhurst?
Well, we're, we're still ironing out the problems in those two areas.
It's been like three or months.
Yeah. It might not be 12 months, oh yeah, it might be, yeah.
I would hope that we can do, if we can look at an increased budget for next year.
Well, the first thing we need to do is get permission, because this is where it's all back and forth.
It's the flowers.
Because if we, if we had have got permission from the landowners first, we wouldn't have got this far down the line. So we now have got so far down the line and not, we're not getting permission. So until, you know, if, if you're going to do any other flower tower, because there seem to be a mixed, I don't think anyone really knows what's going on, I certainly don't. Because there seems to be a mixture of having flower towers where we've said, then the hanging baskets. So I think we. So.
Yes.
We have a fault.
So you've got permission for two areas.
Yes.
And the other two areas, you don't have permission to put towers in. So you either have to, you know, you have to, you say, you could say, well, I'm going to spend another two months worrying about Central Sandhurst. Or you just write that off and say, okay, we'll go for posts, in which case you need to put a budget into January's meeting for that.
Which I have here, yes. Anne is right, but you know, with the best will in the world, could I have foreseen that Jennifer Copland would put an embargo on it? With the benefits, of course I could have done it, no.
Originally, we thought we were putting, we were hanging basket posts anyway, so, you know, we didn't know about them at the time and, you know.
The problem was, was with the corrosion of the posts. And then the suggestion was put forward, I think, one or two environment meetings back, to actually have a look at replacing the posts. I've had great difficulty, I have to say, getting Gary Cleaver to come back to me, it's not for lack of effort, the file is there. You can see, and you, but all of a sudden now, because we've had the Zoom meeting, he seems to actually be far more receptive and responsive to the question. And thus, as I said, I've now had the email from him saying in the region of £500 to £600 per post. And thus, as I said, I've now had the email from him saying in the region of five hundred, six hundred pounds per post.
Okay.
So I've, I've got the budget prepared, but we're bringing it forward, I believe, to January.
It will go in January's budget, yes.
We won't be able to have a contract for this year anyway, because this year is practically over.
Correct, yes. Oh, you have to go to next year's.
It was Nick who just suggested, can we get some going?
Well.
So it would be, the contract would be, do, do they start April?
April, April twenty, twenty six.
Okay, so it actually starts in April, so they don't.
Yes, the problem, yes, of course, we, we, we can't start the posts until April. But then, to be fair, the, the, the company who supply the, 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 the hanging baskets or the flower towers. And they are called windowflowers, they will be receptive to, I think, fairly quickly in terms of installation.
Oh, yeah, so you've got to have a post installed, obviously before April, before the.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm happy to put forward the recommendation, unless there's a further discussion, that's, unless anyone wants to take it over.
So the, uh, the, the challenge there is that, uh, if you put it into next year's budget. Then how long will the count of the borough take to install the posts? Because if it takes them six months.
Yeah, we've lost another.
Then I'll, I'll ask the question.
Yeah.
Because obviously it's, it will be within the schedule, they have other work to do.
I know, yeah.
And it's a matter of accommodating whether we can actually provisionally book a slot, depending on whether it takes a week or ten days. To actually book that, maybe in April.
If we could book it for April.
I think that would be.
And then put it in the budget, um, that would, would help enormously, because then at least we know that we're not going to. You know, wait until July, August for the posts are up, so we can't start the contract till then.
I agree, I agree. I do, honestly, personally, I, I do believe that having the eleven. Ha- having the eleven metal posts with the double hanging baskets will provide the same level of visual impact. And I don't think people in Little Santas or Alstom are gonna say, well, where are our posts? Because these are replacing existing posts.
Correct, yeah.
It's not new posts that are being installed at the old shopping alley, removing the allegedly corroded ones to replace like for like. Within a budget, I, I.
I think Nick's is a good point, asking them, if we go ahead with posts, when are they likely to install it? Otherwise, we're gonna miss the next.
I will go back and give a poll, and try and get an indication, but the fact is that, you know, I'm quite pleased that he's actually responded. Which is unusual, um, but, you know, we are where we are, I, I just want to draw, you know, to, to make progress. So, uh, my recommendation is that I will engage with Bracknell Forest Council to determine availability of resources. To install, to replace the existing eleven metal posts with replacement eleven metal posts. With a view to progressing the hanging, of hanging baskets in the spring of twenty twenty six. Subject to budget approval. Sounds good. Anyone want to?
That sounds perfect.
Second, second dish. Please.
Oh, sorry.
It was seconded, so.
Yes, okay, fine. All those in favour? That's you, no, no. Thank you for your support, it's, had I known then, what I know now, that I've taken this on, the answer is no.
Yeah.
But we are where we are, and I just want to see it to a conclusion, you know, this morning, for instance, we had this great success with the bus. So we do, we do have successes, and I'd like to think that we can achieve the same with the posts, maybe months to come. People say, it was well, what, what, it was worth it.
Yeah.
Okay, then, thank you for that, thank you for your patience and your understanding. Right, number six is the Environment Committee Budget Plan. Nick, do you want to provide any oversight on that as it's your?
I, I think you now want to include a bigger budget for your flowers.
I think I'll go round with a, in January, come with firm figures. Being for flowers or whatever, anyone on the press, obviously you've mentioned about your budget for the climate change group. You know, come with some firm figures in January, because that will be your last opportunity. To, um, be able to agree as a committee and then your request will go to S and P. For approval on, obviously, where it fits in the whole budget.
Yep, agree.
Um, I've got a question for. Question for Ange, on the, uh, town bins. Where we had two thousand four hundred in the budget, when does that get spent? Is that one thing that gets spent in March or something?
So, yeah, Bracknell Forest tend to invoice us at the end of the financial.
Right, okay, fine. So we won't know all that, it's one of those things that goes zero, 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 a hundred percent.
Yes, it's just one bill, yeah.
Because last year it was more than a hundred percent.
Two, six. Yes, and I would suggest it probably will be, but it's not going to go down, is it?
It's not gonna go down, no.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need, probably need to put more in the budget for that one, for next year. Okay, fine, thank you.
Right, thank you for that, um. Remembrance service, I thought, I have to say, I thought it was splendid, I thought the, the acoustics were very good. Um, and I thought, you know, by my impression really as a spectator, um, rather than a participant. Um, was that I thought it was a successful event, I don't know if anyone wants to, Ange, do you want to comment on, you know? You know, in terms of the numbers, maybe.
Do you know how much we collected?
No, that goes off to the British Legion and they will tell us as a hand, because obviously they've got quite a job on their hands to.
Needless to say.
We don't.
I didn't know whether we counted it and then.
No, no, they, they take everything from us sealed and it's all serial numbered and they will let us know at some.
Okay.
It could be, because I, some of the people, I think I spoke to Dale and a couple of others with buckets, so they sent people putting notes in.
Yeah.
With, there's also the QR code as well, which is.
Yeah, yeah, I'd somebody that had the QR code.
Yeah, very successful, um, as always, and a great feedback from the military. And thanking us, it was nice again to have the schoolchildren.
They were terribly smart, they were terribly smart.
You know, but, well, yes.
Made a point of all the.
Well rehearsed and it's quite an honour for them and having seen them at the rehearsals and things. Um, even, even sort of some of the older people that come every year still come to the rehearsal because they want to get it right. So I think it really is an honour and people are very, um, glad to be participating. Um, and given the opportunity to be part of the service.
Nick.
Just on a side note, away from the park, it was chaos. Because there were people parked on the merges in Wellington Road. Uh, and we were using Park Road and Wellington Road as the way around the road closure. And it basically gridlocked.
That's not for the first time now, to be fair.
I know, I know.
I've noted it before.
Living, living through.
Also, we opened, we reopened the road later than we do, we do.
Yeah.
I think that didn't help either.
But Broadway was opened up on Sunday.
Yes, so that was.
But nobody was told, so that's a swing and roundabout.
And that, of course, it was part of our, um, route, so we have to put obviously a plan into the borough.
Yeah.
Um, for our route, which involves that, and then of course S Jen came along, so I went and spoke to them about it. That is why they reopened it for that, just purely for that day.
But even though that was opened, it was, it was, um. It was people parked in Wellington Road was the issue. Uh, because couldn't get two cars past each other and people were being very inconsiderate. Um, you know, trying to, trying to keep their place, not letting cars come the other way, so it was, it was gridlocking a lot.
That's in fact happened with fireworks. But of course, this, this is, hopefully, you know, it was a one-off in terms of the gas pipe re- replacement and same with Swan Lane.
Yeah.
Although they go to Alvin Road, I think.
They're in a case of avenue at the moment.
Oh, yes. John?
Um, yeah, I thought it was lovely, it has always, it's such an important event, which goes without saying, um, but it's organised so well. But you've got to remember, this, this is organising the military, churches, scouts, thousands of residents shutting off roads, so. Thank you, Ange, and the other staff, it's, you've got to host really great events.
Thanks, John.
It did seem a little quiet, quieter this year, and that was commented to me as well by the WI ladies. And some other residents.
Quiet or where?
This, this is it, so I mean, I don't know whether people would maybe stood more the other side to watch. I was surprised because it did seem that the car park area was less busy. Interesting, because the WI actually told me how much busier they are than they've been in many years. I think they just have more people coming for a couple of times. Well, no, they do stand outside as well.
Yeah.
I think it was as busy as every other year, wouldn't it?
So.
I think at the beginning, a lot of people were on the road and then. Near the day Santas. But I, I wouldn't have said it was quieter than any other.
Well, we can compare it, because, I don't know quite what we can compare it to, but the, um, the drones man. It was going to take a picture from above. While, during the ceremony.
Yeah, I've got lots of pictures already that show.
I think he's, I think he's bagged the front page.
Yeah, I, I think it was a, it's a non-qualified success, you know, it gets better each year and the organisation. As John said, I mean, it's all credit to Ange for, for the logistics that went so well. You know, the, the, it's, I, I, they, they enjoyed it, it was lovely, as Nicky said, the families coming out and, you know, the people with dogs.
There's loads of dogs.
Until they start fighting.
Yeah.
Near the back, um, and I mean, oh, it was so funny, this poor dog, it was, it was talking, but he had a, a funny. He had a funny voice, he sounded like a chicken. There were some people nearby and they just got the giggles and you could see this poor man saying like. He took the dog off.
Eight, Christmas tea, pre-decoration, it seems to come around every year. Um, we're looking for volunteers.
Yes.
To, um, myself, I, well, it's an annual event, I look forward to it. Um, it's, it's not over, it's, it takes probably an hour to an hour and a half, and it's actually very nice, it's a, it's, 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 it's a, it's a. It's a sociable event, let's put it that way, there's, there's no.
What are you thinking?
So it needs to be, um, because of the clubs and things that we have, and then we need to get it up before, um, see, our big tree comes. Because the lads won't have time to get it out and help you, so it needs to be either the nineteenth at two thirty. Or the twentieth at eleven o'clock.
What, what, what day is the nineteenth, Ange?
It's the Wednesday or Thursday, yeah.
We're talking November.
Yeah, it would be too late if it's December.
It would be a bit cutting, a bit five, because we can't, on the nineteenth, so the nineteenth or the twentieth, so I.
Happy to help either one.
Who could, we are, to be sure, probably only.
Sorry, can you say the dates again?
Nineteenth, two thirty, or twentieth at eleven AM.
Two thirty, eleven. Not, I think four is about the maximum that we need for it, because the ground start to come, don't they?
They only put the tree out, they don't get involved, don't they?
It's not a match up.
Not their job, that's.
The nineteen.
It does, it comes under any other duties.
I meant their skills now. I nine, do either.
I can do either.
All we've got on the twentieth is a letter meeting. But hopefully it'll be decorated by then.
I'd be worried if you started at eleven o'clock and you were still here at seven thirty.
That's because Michael was arguing over where the fairy goes.
So, well, let me have a show of how to, who would like to participate on either of the dates, okay? Those in favour of the nineteenth? Those in favour of the twentieth?
I probably can do the twenty.
I don't mind, I don't need to, I can do either.
Is it either or either?
Potato or tarto.
I won't come.
Choose at eleven o'clock. And it doesn't interfere with lunch, et cetera, so we'll do it for eleven o'clock on the twentieth of November.
I'll come if I can, let's put it that way.
You can put the fairy up at the top.
It's the benefit of working from home, so I can just.
So, so we, we could potentially then have four.
Yeah, I wish I was.
All right, that, that's, that's agreed, so thank you for that. Um, outside bodies reports going around the table, anything?
Um, yeah, we've been to, um, Blackwater Valley Partnership Trust AGM last Friday. Um, they started off the meeting with a walk, which was quite interesting, um, it's around More Green Lakes, which, um. Which is, they're just opening up a new area, which is going to be acquired by Pitt Hampstead Parish Council. Um, and some new routes around that, so that was quite interesting. And then we, uh, went to Pitt Hampstead Baptist Church, which is a community building, very interesting itself. With lunch, library and council offices. Um, and then the AGM in the afternoon, so, yeah, it's interesting and informative. Very informative of what they're doing there in the, the valley.
How many people were there? In terms of not as roughly, was it well supported or?
Um, there was quite a lot of, some of the partnership that had actually given their apologies, which was disappointing.
It is a bit cyclical, I've been there, sometimes it's crowded, sometimes it's, it's, there is a portion of people. It's, depends if there's somebody else all that evening.
That's Friday afternoon, so.
Thank you.
It was good, it was interesting.
Okay, Nick?
Um, yes, bit of feedback from the Black Bush Consultative Committee.
Yes.
Um, they met in September. Uh, there was. I always do a thing about noise complaints and, uh, it's a sort of standing item. Um, but they did some feed, they gave us feedback on their, uh, air day, which was very popular. And the other bit of news was, uh, they, they're, now that they've sorted out the ownership of the land. And the common land becoming part of their land and then donating another bit of common land. Uh, they're now looking at putting some hangers, some new hangers in, so that's, that's, they're now planning all that now, so. Okay.
Okay, thank you for that, right, um. Number ten footpaths, has anyone got anything to report? Uh, what, what, Christian wanted to make some comments about cocker jogging, um, although, you know, it's a mess.
Yeah, we've got the two different items, if we can do the first one on A.
Oh, yes, okay, then, sorry, yes, A, sorry, yes, um. Are there any issues, anyone want to raise anything, you know, within particular?
Right.
Yes.
Mentioning on the.
Do you want, sorry, do you want to come forward so we can, so it's a bit clearer?
On the walk to, um, the new bridge. Um, I realised that when it rains, there's quite a lot of water on the path that doesn't drain off. Because the path is no longer a sort of.
Turbulent.
Uh, at that angle, because people are gonna walk on it, it's that angle. So all the water comes to the middle and it doesn't all drain through very quickly, I mean, it does drain through, but not quickly. With the sort of weather we've got now, there are about three patches where.
It's probably before the new bridge was installed.
It would have been, yes, it, it, it's a difficult problem and what's happening now is instead of using the path, people are using the grass. And you've got three paths, one on each side. Um, and I'm just thinking that, um. It probably, those individual issues could.
This is, this is.
Could be drained.
You go up to the new bridge, the weather, health walks use it on it every other day, don't they?
And when with the rams.
This is a Bracknell Forest issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's Bracknell Forest, it's not one of ours.
Yeah, it's not on your land, yes, yeah.
But I'm happy to take, take photographs and then send it on to Stephen Chalmers.
So you talk about the north side of the, or south side, or, sorry, west side or east? Yeah, it's on, on the Hampshire side.
Oh, is it?
Oh.
Okay.
Ah, but because, is it?
Turn it. You, Hampshire side, as you approach the bridge? Yes, as, from our end, yeah.
Approaching it from the Tesco end, in other words, then when you cross over by the roundabout.
Is it because the bridge has been done at that?
So that's not the Hampshire side, so that's, that's the Bracknell Forest. It's Bracknell Forest, isn't it? So, so the, 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 the bit between the railway station and the bridge.
Yes.
Is Bracknell Forest land.
Right.
The bit, the other side, when you go south of the river, or west of the, uh.
The other side of the bridge.
Yeah, the other side of the bridge, um, perhaps all Hampshire.
Hampshire, yeah.
So which bridge is Bracknell?
Bracknell is the bit between the.
Tesco side.
Uh, the. Tesco's and, um, the bridge.
Right.
So that is, uh, that's always been lots of, lots of different footpaths anyway, it's, it's always been quite a mess.
I think given the torrential rain we're gonna have the next couple of days, I think what I'll do is wait until the weekend and maybe take photographs.
So which bit were you talking about, the Hampshire side or the Bracknell Forest side?
I think you're saying about the Hampshire.
It, it was actually on the Hampshire side that I spotted, but I think when we did the, up to the A thirty, there was another patch. That was definitely pretty bad as well, so I think it'll probably be both.
Okay.
To sort the, the walk for the, that's just for our walkers going from the, from the council offices.
All right, I'll follow it up and then, you know, establish ownership and then, if necessary, pass it on to, um, another authority. If it's not ours.
Just like to let you know, that won't be minuted because it isn't on the agenda.
And it's not, I'm not a member anyhow, so, just letting you know.
Matter, but it's.
It's, it's, it's off the record.
Okay.
Okay, then, so. Okay, then, so, um, A, I think we've explored, moving on then to B. Um, Chris, do you want to?
Chris, you asked for some obviously displaying, which we're having issues with, so if everyone takes one and passes one round. That Chris wanted you to be able to see.
When were these taken?
Today.
Background of this, um, this footpath, I think is. Coming down this way, I didn't see it, it's a, although you don't know it, it's a. The steep path. It does, it is very subject to getting leaves and.
Where is this path?
It's from.
This is the one that leads to Crowthorne.
If you're up at the Nickel Hill.
Yeah.
Half that goes down via Silver Ridge, it goes down to uh Scotland Hill. Or via Cockadobe, there's a, it's the name, I think the actual.
Yeah.
So, um, the picture you've got there of the, looking down, that is looking down to. Cockadobe, which is a an extension really of of Scotland Hill, so that is a very important route. For pedestrians from the Mickel Hill area, the top of that area, from Mickel Hill, Silver Ridge, um. The freeway where I live, I suppose I should declare that. It's the main route down on foot to both the the train station. And the Methodist Church, which of course has got various activities going on there, you know, from yoga sessions, you know, ba- uh. Got toddlers dancing and stuff like that, all sorts of, and and it's also a polling state, so. Um, it's important that that.
Do you know where it is?
I think so, yeah, yeah. By Temple, probably.
Yeah, go straight up, right up to the top and then.
Yeah.
Cockadobe instead of going Scotland Hill, that way it's.
Yeah, yeah, if you know the seven-sided house on Nickel Hill.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, it's the distinctive one, yeah, that's the junction of Silver Ridge, the end of Silver Ridge, it goes into, um. Into the into that footpath, which you can see that goes down, it's quite steep. It does get covered in leaves and it can get quite slippery and in fact the steps are not horizontally slant slope as well, so. When it's wet and there's leaves there, it is slippery and and I know a lot of the old older residents. Older than me probably, um, do have trouble with it, so it's it's important that we try and keep it clear. Um, and when it's been um reported, I've reported it to Bracknell. Forest Borough, and they usually come along pretty quickly and dealt with it. Um, but of course the leaves build up again very quickly afterwards, so the gentleman who who spoke to me about this, um. He had this idea that we could do it as a volunteer, he would volunteer, I would, and there's probably some other people who would actually. Sweep it away, but the trouble is you sweep it, it it just blows back again. So his idea was to use this um concrete base that you can see there, uh which used to have a a bench. To sit on it, but it's very shady there, nobody ever used it, so that's gone. Um, but that would actually make quite a su- suitable place to for residents to actually fill it up with leaves and stuff like that and. Also either make use of the compost or at least we could then bag it up and get it taken away when, as and when. Um, because we appreciate that it'd be quite an expensive job to for the for council workers to go round there. As often as would necessary to keep it clear when. So, um, it seems like a a an interesting idea. Um, I did try and find out what costs might be, and there's a huge range of prices for compost bins. I mean, the cheaper ones at below a hundred pounds, I I think probably would be too flimsy. And it would obviously need to be bolted down, I would think. Um, and it has to stand away from that wall behind, um. So, I mean, if if we thought it was worth taking further, I mean, I would be quite happy to investigate what. What's available, what the costs would be.
What you're doing effectively is putting a responsibility on a resident to collect the leaves.
Well, yes.
And then put them into the composter.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, oh, what guarantee is that that they would be done on a regular basis, as well as giving interest?
There's no guarantee, but, I mean, if it's done, I think it's one of those things, if the community gets involved in it. Um, and takes, I say takes ownership of it, really, I mean, it's a. So often see that people say, oh, why doesn't the council do this, why doesn't the council?
Given that the council appeared the reason on one occasion, is there a practicalities of actually looking at, it's actually been. Within their their responsibility, designating them.
Yes.
Nick?
Um, I'm looking at these two pictures, this has got a brick wall.
Yeah.
Right beside it, and I can't see where that is in relation to this.
If you stand on the left, you can see the leaning tree there, it's about about half halfway down.
But it's in the sloopy bit.
Slope bit, okay.
Yeah.
Um.
So it, but the the thinking is that then that will compost and then residents could go and take.
Take a long time to compost limestone and.
They could do, but if they didn't, it could be bagged up more easily from one spot like that and then when the. People from Borough come to collect it, composting it would be.
So plan, I mean, devil's advocate, uh, what where's the. Possibility that you would then get people putting rubbish.
Or dog.
In their dog poo bags in there, I'm just thinking, Mi- Michael's got his bin, which. Dog walkers use on a very regular basis upon uh Wildmore. Um, but I know the number of times I go part and I go across it a lot, um, there's. Cans and other general rubbish in there, then then Michael will have to go. Individually and clear that, but I'm saying is if that it then happens to what's there. How usable is the compost, yeah?
I mean, it is, it is a risk, it's leaf mould anyway, mostly, it's pretty, what is, serving best, but, um. Yeah, I mean, it is a risk, I mean, I think Michael would agree with me that the that is not particularly rubbish strewn, is it? I mean, you obviously didn't.
Uh, is I I just wonder if in fact we're in terms of obviously having to take the leaves away, if the borrower do it, do they not come along with a shredder? So that leaves are then put in and then shredded and then taken off site. It can't be the only location where they collect leaves.
They did it, they didn't take, they swept it down to the bottom of the leaf blower, blew blew it down onto this, most of the street down in um in Cockadobe.
Is that what they did? Do we know what they did? They responded with alacrity, I believe, did they?
Pretty quick coming along and doing it, yeah, yeah, I've got no complaints about that.
I personally.
I was watching with a leaf blower today on the road between. Coral Reef and Ascot, if you can picture that, it's straight across, isn't it? And there was a couple of guys with a leaf blower, and all they were doing was blowing the leaves off the path into the road. They weren't collecting, they had no means of collecting, they were merely moving stuff around.
Go along and then blow it back.
No, the the cars actually then crushed the leaves and they disintegrated, so.
Yeah, they become a sort of slurry.
Then when it's, yeah, exactly.
It didn't look particularly useful.
Who, did you, did you speak to the borough about coming and doing that?
No, I, well, I I just went to customer services and.
Customer, what, customer services?
Yeah.
Is it something, Chris, you'd like to follow through with Bracknell Forest Council?
Yes.
You think we're willing to take it on, I I think because you've almost adopted it, well, it is, it is your footpath, isn't it?
Yes, it's the one.
So, I I I would prefer that it be a borough responsibility, I'm concerned when you start. Inviting in the Vertigo's residents to take ownership, because my experience, it doesn't work. They say it's a great idea.
And then it falls by the wayside.
Well, they say, what's in it for me?
Uh, you are right about the problem with cans and other literature, but this this looks as though. That's not a problem on this particular path. I mean, I do the one that um goes between the post office and my house. And I have to take all the cans and the vape packets, et cetera, et cetera. Out before I collect the leaves and I can't compost them because it's valuable compost.
And your blue bin benefits.
No, I never put anything like that in the blue bin.
Brown bin.
Well, I don't have a brown bin, I don't need one, I compost everything.
You've used your brown bin for this purpose, haven't you, in the past?
I think, look, in summary, Chris, can we leave it to you?
Yes.
Or the opportunity for the borough, it I I think it's within their responsibility, you know, from a. An appearance point of view, another.
And a safety side, I think if you emphasise the safety aspect of the age of people going up and down it. I'll go and walk up and down it, you can.
Go down, you just get momentum and you're.
Yeah, the other concern I have is the amount, the the size of the bin you'd need for all the leaf mulch, you know, it might be quite big.
It would have to be pretty big, yeah.
Because it takes a while to rot down.
Yeah.
Hmm, it would have to be a pretty big bin, yeah.
I think the first thing is to get the council to go and take them away.
Yeah.
You just want them to blow them around?
I I remember then when Mark and I did it on one occasion, about a couple of years ago, we swept all the leaves down to the bottom. And I think we connected up like twelve black bin liners, we, so it's 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 too much, I think, for an individual. Whereas the borough, I think, have the resource, shall we say, the equipment. However they do it, whether they shred it, whether they take it away, but at least they will benefit from it in terms of the composting opportunities.
And so we've had to propose on Michael, which is that it's the borough's responsibility.
Yes, and so I'm proposing that, do I have a second offer? All those in favour of that recommendation, that's you now, uh, no, oh, yes, all right, yes.
I've started, it's going through, it doesn't matter.
That's you, fine, thank you for that. Well, in that case then, and notice boards, um, we've got a budget for it, haven't we, Alan? What I'm thinking is that we may.
We do A first. A.
A.
And, all right, yes, okay, Ange, to receive feedback on an action's taken from the signed monitor. Anyone got anything to report? No. Okay, then, B, to consider the replacement of notice boards suggested by a councillor. Oh, Hazel, was that for reasons or?
Well, I just, I just think they need updating and improving and, um, uh, people have have a job putting their pins in or. Can we make them more waterproof, you know, let's look at it and see what we can do.
A notice board, Ange, you may know what happened to it, there was a notice board on the entrance to Snap Rails off Abingdon Road. And that seemed that that was maintained by Snap Rails residents. And that actually had a glass front and that seems to have disappeared. No ideas?
I know, I thought, just thought you might know.
Didn't even know it was there.
Take you on a field trip one day.
I think the same thing applies, doesn't it, when you go off Wellington Road into Snap Rails, there was a notice board on the left-hand side.
There's one down the bottom as well.
I think that's maintaining.
For us to ma- maintain that one, yeah.
They do, yes, because that's a different design with the glass. I think it's honestly the budget of a hundred pounds wouldn't really even cover one notice board, would it?
No.
No.
So it's something maybe to look out for the budget for next year if we're going to replace.
Well, we could do a rolling programme, they don't all have to be done at once, do they?
No, they don't.
There are twelve notice boards, but some of them are in quite good condition, is there also, Ange, there's a rotation. Have a spare one, and if there's damage, they took theirs and they take the old one away to refurbish it.
They do do the repairs on them, yeah.
Um, my my, uh, just a thought, that you might want to, if there's a rolling programme to replace them as they disintegrate. Maybe on, um, when they do disintegrate, we replace them with something, you know, on these uh ones that have a. You know, perspex panel or something.
I mean, to put that into perspective, I've been here for ten years and I can only recall one being replaced.
That would be.
They they are quite sturdy and quite robust.
Yeah.
Yes, putting in a.
Disintegrate, we may be waiting a long time.
So the other question is, if if they are, if they are sealed front.
Yes.
Um, units, i.e. the general public can't just open them, then what do we do about putting the, putting the notices up? Because if we are the people that have the keys to them, then that means our staff have to.
Well, just look to that one, it doesn't.
I I think we just have perspex, you know, maybe two pieces that slide, maybe. Those slide.
I don't know, I wondered whether that's got an Allen key at the side.
See, I think most, most of those, most of the ones I've seen which have some sort of perspex front to them. Uh, have some sort of, uh, you know, opening mechanism that you can't just.
And certainly the one we've got in the park at the front and the one that the tennis club have got out the back are both locked.
So it would mean that every every post of the way up.
And then we'd have to get the key back, I is it's. Difficulty, I think the present arrangement isn't bad. You know, and frankly, they're off of a notice board for usually more than four to six weeks.
Yes.
By which time they should be taken down, so I think the present system does seem to work fairly well. Um, but if anyone wants to, um, do you do you want?
Do you want me to find out the cost of that one?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I've done some costings, I said, they're between three hundred and sixty-four and five hundred and five, the thoughts that are pictured in the annex.
So we have to wait until all the budgets available? Shall we, shall we just carry?
It's not just, it's not just that, you have to look at the practicalities of changing the posters, how it's done.
Because they're usually in concrete, aren't they? I think.
No, the posters is.
Now, I'm talking, but if 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 we're looking at replacing it with something as pictured in the in the, um. Uh, in the appendix. It's going to be a lockable cabinet, so we have to work out what happens every two or three. You know, once a week or whatever, when someone has to go out and replace.
It's fraught with difficulty.
Yeah.
Putting responsibility on on what potentially will be one of the ground staff to do.
It won't be the grounds staff.
At the moment, Ange, so if somebody comes in and wants to put a poster up, we stamp it, you stamp it, the office stamps it and they put the posters up. If it's a poster that is something for us, like remembrance, somebody would go out and and put those on from the office.
Yeah.
Okay.
But most of the stuff that goes up, I would say seventy-five percent of the stuff that goes up is.
Community stuff.
Is community stuff, yeah, we don't want to be giving out keys, we're just now going back.
No.
I think the present system works well, it's it's.
You could do it where it's done on a monthly basis, so that if people want to put posters up. Then it goes from the, it might have your poster in from the first, and then it's just one trip a month rather than going.
Wouldn't be making any trips a month, because the only time we go to them is for the events. And summer fun, so we tend to go as staff, maximum four, five times a year.
Could that be one of the tasks for the for the like, the councillors to go? Yeah, I mean, if we've got, if we've got asked, if we're walking past them, then if if you was to say, then. You know, your posters come in for the beginning of the month.
But what happens if someone has got?
That was just.
Yeah, I I that, great idea, Nick, but I don't. Because no one can take ownership.
The green, the green event, the green fair, for instance, I got laminated, I got me stamped, and then I went round and did the twelve notice boards and. I'm, I think, I think it's easier for one councillor to, where is appropriate, and it's their particular portfolio. In conjunction with Chris, to actually go round and do all the notice boards, rather than to subdivide it, so that you've got. Six councillors having two notice boards each for the flyer to go on.
But there's not going to be any real ownership, is there? And what happens if someone comes in the week before their event? But that, the monthly trip isn't until the middle of next month, it's just not practical.
I think.
It's the better system, what I'm thinking about is though you could have a general annual, um, Allen key. Where half the households in Sanders have an Allen key, if it's all the standard size. Depends on what the manufacturers offer.
Some of them have their diff, like what what locking mechanisms some of them have.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's not locked now, so it's not going to make any difference, having a a lock that everybody's got access to. Well, it wouldn't matter, would it? As long as the rain doesn't get in, and otherwise, if the rain does get in, it's the same as you've got now. So you have no loss.
When they're laminated, they will last probably four to six weeks, and by that time they should be coming down anyway, usually, because the event is over.
It's just in more environmentally friendly not to have to laminate. It's just environment, more environmentally friendly not to have to laminate, the reason for having, uh, perspex front is to, yeah.
Not to laminate and, and it keeps it, you don't get the, you won't get the, the fly poster that you do get on the.
That appears. And then it may look smart.
And some of the princes, and my example is that if, if it rains, all the incrons down.
Yeah, look, but, Michael, what I'm saying is, if you had perspex fronts.
Yes.
With a shut door, you would not need to laminate.
But then we're into the keys.
Yes, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's.
How often do you get somebody in that wants posters up?
Very frequently.
I mean, twice a week?
Some weeks, yeah, it is very, well, you see as councillors how much goes on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we'll, we'll leave it for the time being, maybe, and just have a review of it next time we meet, if, if you're happy with that. I don't think we're going to arrive at a consensus tonight.
Different locking mechanisms, that's the thing, as, as somebody said.
General Anna, Al- Allen key with a slide, I would have thought that would cover both issues.
Well, we need some sort of a proposal as to what you're going to do.
Does someone take on the responsibility of looking at this as a project? And then reporting back at the next meeting? Or just leave it in a.
I mean, I, I don't mind asking that, that, because I think this one's particularly smart, I don't mind asking how this one opens and operates.
Hmm.
So you're happy to take that?
I, I'll look at this one and find out.
Coming back with a budget proposal, I'll go back to what I said earlier, we need firm figures for January. So just looking at one isn't going to be sufficient.
Well, no, I'm gonna.
Find out how it locks.
Yeah, that's what I want to do, yeah.
We will need pricings for several so that it can be compared and you know roughly what you're looking to ask for. Because obviously it's a substantial amount of money, it's gonna be, like I've said, at least four thousand, if not more. Um. Unless you choose to do however many, yeah, but then what happens if one break is in the meantime, you know, I don't, I don't know. But you need a proper plan to come to the budget meeting with, otherwise there won't be any budget to do it.
But you could spend the next, you know, few months working on it, right, you, you know, okay, it doesn't stop, it won't, it, it won't be in next year's budget. But you could still work on it for the year after.
Yeah. Yeah. But do you really want that dragging on for over a year, which is what we've just had with the hanging baskets?
Holes, hmm.
So it's replacing notice boards, I don't think it's rocket science, you know, should it take over a year to make the decision on it? And get the budget, or if you want to do it, we either.
I'm keen, I'm keen to do it, but I've got something else going in the background, which I can't let go, so.
Doesn't happen, do you, Hazel?
No, that's why I, I can find that out, but I don't want to be.
Have a recommendation, the council hill will explore the.
No, I, I haven't got the time at the moment, Michael, that's the problem, I've got something else, do you want the? Would you be willing to support it? Take it on?
What, what I think my opinion is, it looks very nice, uh, but there seems to be some complications with it, um.
We want a simple solution, hmm, yeah, yeah.
Just, shall we just leave it the way it is at the moment, there's no recommendation.
Yeah, leave the farm.
Yes, we'll just leave it because it's, it's, I'm, I'm not sure there's a consensus view. And really, I think it's one of those things that someone would need to take ownership of, to come forward with a proposal, that we can then.
I, I could, I can look into it, but it might not, I can't guarantee that I can have the figures for January.
Just leave it as a, as a, as an optic.
As a, yeah.
In, in.
Update, update in due course.
Yeah, on the fifteenth, by the, when we meet on the fifteenth of January, all right, fine, I think, right, in that case then.
So what is the actual proposal?
Well, um.
That we park it.
Yeah, thank you, Nick, is that a technical term?
Yeah.
Can we leave this?
Propose we just, we can leave it in a balance of the time doing.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have a second.
Yep, I'll pick a second one.
Yes, I'm, right.
I'm in favor.
Proposing that, I'm secondary, yes.
She's.
Nick is secondary.
Right.
You've got to be quicker, Michael.
No.
I've not had my dinner yet.
It was in favour, it was in favour, right, that's in for unanimous. Right, good, speeding up, press and publicity. Think to a report, very well known, date of the next meeting, fifteenth of January twenty twenty-six.